Please welcome our drum corps members Jackie, Jeff, Jenny, JJ back to the stage. We'd also like to welcome Ms. Todd's class band to say a bunch of allegiance. The course will welcome the members of the National Department. Please take standing while we do so.
I am here to declare that the United States of America and its republic, which stands one nation, under law, in the law, in the law. From the halls of J.J.I., from the town that shouts its name, we have no power to resist and all this is said. To our bodies, friends, we come with the golden flag we shine. We are proud to be the champions of achieving excellence. I see trees uprooting, red roses too. I see a blue for being in you. And I think to myself, what a wonderful world. I see skies of blue and clouds of white. A bright day, the stars keep reminding, and I think to myself, what a wonderful world. The colors are rainbow, rain in the sky. Our thoughts go on the basis of people going by. I'll be there and she will be there, saying out loud, "We're the champions." And I will say, "I love you." They hide his pride, I watch them grow. I hear their cries, and how they're beautiful. And I think to myself, what a wonderful world. Yes, I think to myself, what a wonderful world.
We have one special creator who is writing, we'd like to share it with them. Drum roll please. Please welcome down Chloe, who has also been in the class. Chloe will share her story of the wonder of the forest.
I have a question, you live in your own village, yes, why do you, because of your face, outcome, etc. Yeah, I do, I live in the forest, my home, or near the water, I have children, I release rats, I use flowers, next to the pond, frogs, I would be crazy. That is a lot, right? I think it is. But I also can't see lightning in a sunset or whiteish sky. That is scary and crazy. I love a word for air, but it scares me sometimes, but that is okay, not everyone's gonna be scared. Sometimes when I'm in the jungle, and the sun is out, you can see my family's second pond in my graveyard. Because the light reflects on it. In summer, if you go out by minutes to my house, or in my backyard or backyard, you can see and touch frogs. Even horses, I love living near a forest in my life.
Chloe, we enjoyed reading your description, telling us why you love having a background so close to the tours in your life. Great job!
Jackie, I didn't show that.
Well, I know you should do it, it's good for you.
Yes, you're right, share the presentation from.
Craig and Chloe, tell us more. This summer, and then to begin at your library. We invite you to hike, bike, and swim with us this summer at the Craig and Memorial Library. Summer registration for program reading starts on June 10th. Earn Craig and dollars to shop at our stores at reading. We have so many prizes, we have them for kids, we have them for teens, and we even have them for adults. We have so much going on for readers of all ages. Camp Craig and, our family takeoff event, will be on Thursday, June 20th at 6:30 AM. It will be lots of fun for the whole family. Be sure to check out our summer newsletter for all the program details, including reading and old crafts, paint items, spy jam, messy Mondays, cookie wars, and so much more. We can't wait, see you this summer!
I'm all alone, and I'm here to recognize superstars who have perfect tendencies. Please hold your thoughts until we end.
Drum roll please.
Well done, Angie F., Michael I., Juliette K., Aria M., Adam P., and Emilio S. to receive their award. Don't forget all of them!
Aria, M., can you give my background again?
I'm, yeah.
Um, Juliette K. was also.
Now let's give them a round of applause for their well deserved honor. We have one special creator who's celebrating his fun. Drum roll please. We welcome down Katie, who has just entered the classroom in class, shared her youth on Rosa Parks Club.
Rosa Parks was one of the most amazing Black persons in Native Nation. Along time with little friend, Black people had packed the book, a white piece of cotton tree trunk. Rosa Parks has done those stand and one mission of picking cotton on the ground. Chapter one, Black people used to work on mountainous paths when they were younger than us. Black people had rights, they didn't want to steal. They wanted to school how to pet, but Black people listened to them some, so they would leave. Chapter two, one day Rosa Parks found a mountainous path that looked like a black key for me to speak. They brought her to the American Avenue Station, men say they were Rosa Parks' path and not on the road. First, they ended with writing an article about them. Rosa Parks wanted to get rid, but she got out of it. Chapter three, the Bushmen were not putting up with Rosa Parks' hat and sword. The Bushmen called the cops and tried to stop them. She did not only do the job, but never did it again. Rosa tried to run to the part of jail, and she goes through the Bushmen's park, not riding the bus, and lost the ticket. Chapter four, the Bushmen's cars didn't money even, no one knew. They never figured they should write and have people read. Now you can run over those ponds, though, she wouldn't be able to change that for me.
We actually have all the pieces of the book, including the highlight why Rosa Parks, why Rosa was so wonderful, peaceful, and true.
Thanks for sharing, Katie!
What do you know about Martin, right?
I know it's important for our planet, and people should know more about it. I couldn't agree more. Drum roll please. Please welcome down Mrs. Johnson, who has been involved with Martin.
Darnin, go on around you. In Richmond, garden, during our dirt race, I mean, that was a dirt, kind of, we focused on garden, and we wanted to learn about what it takes to grow our own food. We had talked for a little bit, we were talking about multiple intelligence. This is our best way to focus on natural, natural intelligence, verbal linguistic, and visual facial intelligence. You can't brush the garden, of course. We don't want to create a bond between you and your master gardeners. They gave us something to practice. We decided to spread tomatoes, basil pepper, cucumbers, lettuce, peas, and green peas. Seeds, a lot of those were very surprised at what the seeds looked like. Did you know that seeds floating in the pickle jar are cucumber seeds? Beans and peas, these are actually beans and peas. Lettuces and basil seeds are a ton. Planting, if that first seed doesn't succeed, try and try again. The first time we planted these, we had bad luck. Nothing grew, and we realized that the dirt was not absorbing the water. Doesn't plant root, need water, we actually had to do it. While some of us, as we had to prepare for it, the rest of us attempted some seeds out of the courtyard. They were carried, so it was dug little holes, and planted seeds, we labeled them too. Each seed, during our winter, in the wet and dry fall, we observed our plants in the quarter dead room in hours of drought. The plants grew quickly, had to turn, turned up into bigger cups, they needed to be watered and have the best sun they would. You can see our onions growing in the courtyard right now. They're pretty scared, lettuce, flowers, beans. Each of us brought to their homes, a cavity seed, as those are the next in our class. We, we are going to plant them or grow them in pots at home, we tend to be thinking, what we grow? We've read about plants and learned about gardens. And now we can't wait to eat!
Please welcome down Charlotte and Emily from the art department.
Hi, I'm Adrian.
And I'm Charlotte. And we're from the harbor and the war. We have chosen three pieces of amazing artwork that we have been targeting. We just can't spare our works of magic paint box, and it's voted on by the people.
Our most important is the Monarch.
Drum roll please.
Audrey Travis, Emma Markbell, Ethan Crum, and Montos. Sorry, I forgot their names.
Go on down.
Audrey, please tell us about your artwork.
I was inspired to make this drawing because of my daughter, Candy. Candy's been a golden girl, she is really cute, and I love her a lot. To me, my daughter looks like pictures of golden girls. I noticed all the details of the pictures, and I created my own outline of the golden people, and they have the color in the picture.
Audrey, pick it up.
Audrey, we love what you've done with you, and bring some of your matches.
Emma, please tell us about your art.
When I became a kid back then, as a teenager, I was a cat, dreamed of becoming the architect of the doors. Those stills, the gem, first drops of my job in the land. So, when I went to the door, I had to be trained, probably, maybe, about that. The whole process of creating this art, and it was not a format that ever went.
Emma, we love what you do, and your art is very important to me, and it brings us with time.
Ethan, please tell us about your art.
For me, I do this for myself, but I realize that was really good, so I asked my friends if they wanted, if I could submit it, and they said, share. So that's what I did, and you're right.
We can't wait to see all the great artworks that will be submitted next year. Have a great summer, don't forget, the online art collection, Draw with your best!
It was incredible, we wished for a great job today altogether.
Thank you! We are so, we are excited to share our findings of work with you today. Drum roll please. Please welcome down Audrey, who has been doing five, three, two, one, two.
The flower is nice, it is peaceful and pretty, the flowers calm. We love the photograph you took in the home, it is wonderful.
Third graders have been working hard to learn how to play their recorder, please put them down. Drum roll please. Bailey, Jeanne, Nate, need to share more about how this seminar helps students to write and share their own recorder songs.
Hi, my name is Bailey, and I'm a musician. The beginning, the end, the view, the start, the morning, half, full, and three quarters. We will try to find a B.A.G.E.N. Over the past four weeks, third graders wrote their own recorder songs in the department of other classes. Today, we will present a handful of amazing songs, third graders played. You will see machine music, and here are the nine, and here are nine, or, 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 songs. Some are songs with a lot of emphasis on, are songs with a lot of. We are trying to show you the songs that I have played, feeling and good one in my classes. We hope you enjoy them.